All right, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and the call, the December 9th, 2025 meeting of town in Granby Plains zoning commission order. Those who are able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, do a commission check-in. In any seating of alternates, I'll mark a lot with the commission chair, starting my far right, Eric Luking Beal, member.
Christine Shinney, member.
Eric Myers, vice chair.
Bob Levitt, member.
Steve Muller, member.
Paula Johnson, Alvernet.
Okay, and Commissioner Shanahan is not attending, so Paula will be seating. Hello, Paula. Okay, next, I'd like to make a suggestion to the commission. Normally, we do informal discussions after public hearings, but I missed that on the agenda, so I'd like to entertain a motion to move item six to after item seven. We swap those out?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor of moving the agenda?
Yeah.
All right. So we'll do the public hearings first and then informal discussion. Okay, next on the agenda is public session. If there's any members of the public that'd like to speak to the commission about a planning and zoning matter, please come forward.
Maureen Everly, Silky Road. I'm here tonight as your representative to the lower Farmington River, Salmon Brook Wild, and scenic. My comment is in relation to 37 Hartford Avenue, so do you want me to defer it until later, or can I go now?
Well, tonight, we're not, tonight is not, there's no applications in front of this commission.
I understand.
So we're not really taking public comment about, there's no comment on 37 Hartford Avenue. You're just having an informal.
Right.
Yeah.
But I think it's important for you to hear what I would like you to hear regarding it, because my understanding is that you will move, make a decision to move it forward and instruct the person.
No. So just to let everyone know, the commission, all commissions in Connecticut do this, Granby included, we encourage interested parties to come to the commission before they submit an application to kind of throw out some ideas. And they, they kind of see if they're on the right path, how they're looking to the regulations. So there's nothing before the commission, there's no decisions being made to see. It's just, that's why it says an informal discussion, and the applicant will decide, or excuse me, the person that's here will decide if they want to become an applicant and put together an application.
So you will not make a recommendation?
No.
Either way?
Correct. We're not making a recommendation, we're just listening, and they make, a proposed applicant might have a question, oh, is this within the regulation? Staff can say that's in the regulation. They're just kind of getting their feet wet if they want to propose an application in the future.
Okay.
We actually encourage that, save some time and resources on people.
So there will be another opportunity for you to hear the concerns as they relate to, okay?
If the person coming decides to put an application forward for a special permit or any other changes like that require a public hearing, there will be a public hearing, and just like we have four of them today.
Correct.
And the public can come and speak to it and submit out in material.
Okay, then I'll come back when you have the other.
Perfect. Thank you, Maureen. Appreciate it.
Have to make you come up, though, for the microphone. Have to make you come up for the microphone.
Okay, Reinhard Meyer, 138 Day Street. I will not say anything about 37 Hartford Avenue, but I will make a commentary about 35. But I do understand that Julian's is on the agenda tonight?
Yes, it is.
And all I want to say is très magnifique. I'm so happy to see that we have something before this commission that is very positive, in particular to my stomach. Unfortunately, it's contributing to additional parents, but that's another issue. That's not a problem, because that's what everybody else, but that's my commentary on that. I do have a letter here, it's a plan review for.
Did you say you want to talk about 35 Hartford Avenue?
Thirty-five, yes.
That's a public hearing item, which is item D on the agenda. We'll have a, open the public hearing if you'd like to speak. That's when we'll speak about 35.
Mark, when you gave your intro, you said people in the public want to be heard, and you didn't add the line, you know what I do about for items not on the agenda?
Okay, sorry.
It's on the agenda, it's on the genesis of public hearing.
Yeah, public, we're, we're in public session right now, which is items not, we have a separate part for 35. Sorry.
You'll be asked.
You'll be asked to come up. When it's on the agenda.
So I gotta go through the whole process here, listen to you guys go before I can speak.
You do. Sorry. Commissioner Labbe is right, I didn't, it's my fault, I didn't state that we're gonna...
Clarify a little bit on the agenda items, if you would, please.
Because we have, item D is 35 Hartford Avenue.
Yeah, item 70.
Seventy. Sorry.
It was a very short item, I didn't read just the title.
That's okay.
Ellen Thompson.
Okay, see someone on Zoom, Ellen?
Um, yes, thank you. I'm trying to.
Just Ellen, for the, just for the record, just state your name and address, please, because it doesn't show up all the time on the, on the recording.
Um, my name's Ellen Thompson. I live at 250 Salmon Brook Street, Granby.
Okay.
Um, and I just wanted, for an item that's not on the agenda, have you reviewed the new housing of lot 8002? And are, and if so, have you looked to see, because there are a bunch of things that are incentives, that if we do certain things, we can then qualify for financial incentives or some infrastructure on sewer and on school construction and some other issues. So I'm just wondering if, if there was a review of that and if there will be any comment or any place for public comment or to hear what might get changed with respect to zoning and housing?
Okay. I don't mind answering that. Yes, individual commission members have reviewed the law, and I've actually talked to staff about having a presentation, I believe. Abby, do you want to reiterate kind of what you said, we're looking at with the town attorney and with the town manager?
Yep. So I'll, there will likely be an overview provided in January. The forum is to be determined whether it will be with this board, if there will be a joint session with Board of Selectmen, so still working out details of that. But the short answer is yes, we are reviewing and an overview and summary of the legislation will be provided and what Granby needs to do in response.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Abby. Anything else? Being seen, we'll close public session. Next, it is item, next item is on number five, action on the minutes of October the 28th. I was not here for that meeting, but thank you, Vice Chair Myers, for covering. I looked, everything okay?
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
I'll take a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
I will abstain, too. All right, so minutes pass. Next, we're going to open our public hearings. We have four public hearings this evening. The first is an application for an amendment to the regulations in the T1 zone. I'll ask Vice Chair Myers to please read the call to the hearing.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P&amp;Z on Tuesday, December 9th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road, to hear and consider the following item. Application seeking an amendment to zoning regulations, section 3.10, neighborhood and commercial transition zone, T1, to add section 3.10.2.13 for a mixed-use building allowed by special permit file Z-1625. At the hearing, NRS, the persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the community development office.
It's the applicant or the representative here.
Good evening. Hi, how are you? I'm Frank Groll, 227 Simsbury Road, West Granby. This is on the property, the old Precious property. We were very interested in pursuing and finishing the purchase on that property, but there was a condition of best use in that building, I thought, is a mixed-use upstairs, is a very nice space, there's two full bathrooms up there, so I would like to make that into a apartment. I own like four or five of them already, mixed-use units. I just finished Frank's in East Granby, that's the same, same, exact same restaurant downstairs and apartment upstairs. What we're looking to do downstairs is cafeteria-style, and I mean cafe, not cafeteria, cafe, and cafe and lunch, so breakfast and lunch of that nature, whether it be a bagel brunch shop or something like that. We also want to, we would like to, you know, lease bicycles for the trail, to walk, you know, the walk trail, so on and so forth. So I buy, I buy these properties, I got many of them, and we find the best use for them, and we lease them, that's what we do. So FNG Enterprises is me and my daughter Nina, and we own that, we're gonna own that together, we own other places together, and that's just what we're looking to do there. I think it's a unique place, I think it's pretty nice, it needs, needs some TLC, we're gonna give it, do it, you know?
So just, so you're asking for a text amendment to add to the regulations for mixed use, then, correct?
Yeah, mixed use.
I do want to clarify, Abby, for the record, I noticed that the applicant's letter says, subject special use permit request, and he also has a special permit. This is not about a special permit, it's only for a text amendment, is that correct?
Correct.
So the, this application is for a change in text amendment, and you would have to come back if the commission approves it for a text amendment?
Yeah.
Or, excuse me, for a special permit?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Just, you said it's gonna be a one-bedroom, is, if you were to get the permit?
Yeah, one bedroom. Yeah, one bedroom. Yeah. Yeah, it's very, it's very nice upstairs, prior use was an office and whatever, storage, it's too nice for that.
Abby, anything else we need to?
Yes, just a couple of quick highlights. So, the T1 zone, which I included a map and a staff review memo, so you can see the properties that that covers, mixed use is not currently allowed either by right or by special permit, which is why this application is before the commission. By granting or approving the text amendment to allow by special permit, the commission would still have the ability to evaluate applications on a case-by-case basis to see if a specific property within that zone is appropriate for mixed use. Because when the commission approves a text amendment, as you know, it applies potentially to every property within that zone, so even though there is an application with a plan to move forward with a specific property, that's something to keep in mind. I did look through the T1 zone regulations, and it does state that a goal is to provide a transition of uses from high-intensity commercial to residential. I think a mixed-use fits within that overall goal. And also, in several places in the plan of conservation and development, it speaks to providing a greater opportunity for mixed-use commercial and residential development. So again, I think that this change would be consistent with the POCD in that respect.
And you have mixed uses in other places in town?
Correct. Yep.
And both of the individual uses are approved, it's just not?
Yeah, the mixed use, right.
Anything else you want to add?
No, that's basically about, that's basically about it.
Commissioner, questions?
All right. That building started out life as a house, didn't it? I mean, it was.
Yes, yes.
Or it was a restaurant.
Yes, it did, yep. And, I mean, the location, there's, I don't know how many apartments behind it?
Right.
Already, you know, so it's not really, I don't know.
I see question.
Out of whack, what I'm asking for.
Is there any other properties that fall within, is it just the pink area here that we're concerned with?
So, it's actually the, the light brown, tanish, is the T1.
Oh, it's that area.
Yes. Yeah, so it extends from the intersection of Floydville Road and Salmon Brook up to the property immediately across from the vet there, where the house was demolished, the vacant piece there.
Okay. But again, we would have a final say if somebody came in with an application on another property, wouldn't necessarily think it was a good application.
Correct, yep.
Or even this, if this. Or this application.
You may have to come back to us.
Yeah. It's going to be a special permit, not a.
A zone change.
Permitted use, yeah. Okay, I have nothing else.
I don't have anything to answer. I was concerned it was gonna change the whole, but it's one.
I was, too, actually, I thought, I didn't, I didn't read it carefully.
Yeah, I didn't care to change it for the whole area, but if it has to come back for special, that's fine.
And I, and I think what's important is for the commission to understand that we do have the power to say no, we do not want a mixed use along Canton Road.
Right, right.
And to me, that would be my concern, to see something like that to come up, which is not appropriate. It's too abrupt a transition, so.
I guess it would depend on what that mixed use is.
That's true, too.
Yeah.
That's why a special permit gives the flexibility, yeah. That's right.
I, I feel like we've used special permit very effectively, so if that's all they're looking for here, I'm, I don't have any questions.
I don't mean either. I'll let, we'll let you come back, but if there's any members of the public that'd like to speak in this application, please come forward. Anyone on Zoom? Do you have anyone on Zoom? No.
I can't tell, I think.
No, she, she, she didn't know.
Oh, she said, okay.
Anything else from staff side?
I do also want to note that the text amendment was referred to Crog and Northwest Hills, and we did receive report that there are no conflicts with the regional plans, so we are all set on that.
Okay. Anything else you have?
That's it.
There's no other information, we'll close the public hearing. Commission has up to 65 days to make its decision, but we'll be talking about the closed applications at the end later in this meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next on our agenda is item B, of 7B, is application seeking to modify a special permit for Nine Bank Street. Vice Chair Myers, can you read the call to the hearing, please?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P&amp;Z on Tuesday, December 9th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road, to hear and consider the following item. Application seeking to modify a special permit under zoning regulations, section 8.3 and 8.16 for a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages to expand into the adjacent unit for property located at Nine Bank Street, Unit H, COCE Zone. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the community development office.
It's the applicant or the representative here.
Hello. I'm Chris Peregrin, 175 Barn Door Hills Road.
You know, every time you guys are here, I always ask, you know, where's the samples?
Yeah. Well, we have, we should, we should recognize that Julian just won a very nice award, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
I suggest that he not do that.
We're big cans of pastries here on the plan.
Right.
And that was national, too.
But still, we're gonna listen, because we gotta follow the rules, so.
Exactly.
If you like pastries, you gotta follow the rules.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, sorry to interrupt, but you know, you were here over the summer to.
Right.
Look at the Bank Street location, and let's explain to us, you know, what you're doing in addition to what you were here, just kind of go through your application.
Right, so we were here in July, and we were originally talking about the one unit, which is roughly 3,000 square feet, and once we plotted out the space, we realized we were not left with sufficient seating, really, so we weren't really solving the issue that we're encountering at the farm store. So it occurred to us that this, the Edward Jones space, which is right between the space we're talking about, the larger space, um, Geisters, was open and empty, and we thought that that would solve the problem for us, really, if we put a hole through the wall and created sufficient seating. So that's what we're here talking about. So that's the lower right-hand corner, it's about 1,300 square feet, and we can, I know in the, in the application, I say 90, I think we've got plans for between 65 and 75 seats in there, as well as the bathrooms, and so that's what that, that's what that would be.
And you're not looking for any other changes for your last permit, you're just looking to?
Yeah, everything else is as-is.
Basically, expand the permitted uses we gave you last time into that new.
Correct.
New structure.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Abby?
Yeah.
From the layout and the new use in that other storefront, are we still meeting the parking regulations for that plaza?
Yes.
So the park, because we have, that'll be the fourth restaurant in the plaza?
Correct.
So we have enough parking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Also, the same conditions we had on the permit, everything from last time, which we had, no outdoor dining or outdoor music, the hours of operation and the trash plan, it's all that?
All the same.
All the same?
Yeah.
Anything, Abby, anything else the applicant needs to describe, or you have a question?
Nope, nothing else to know.
I'm glad the commission's discussed how we've seen empty storefronts in town for a long time, so I think this fits into some of the work that we're doing to try to see businesses come into town.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah, we're excited.
But I'll open, Commissioner, questions?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions, exciting.
Yeah, totally, might need it, so. What's your, just, with all of this, is there gonna be disruption or construction to the existing plaza, or what's the time, is it happening over the winter?
I think most of the real disruptive construction has happened already. There's nothing particularly disruptive, it's, I mean, we just kind of stripped it down, and the, the hole between the two spaces, which was a day's work, is done, but other than that, all equipment will go in through the back, so I don't imagine any real disruption.
Okay. Yeah. Well, if there's nothing else, so is there any members of the public that'd like to come forward to speak?
You wanna practice your French a little more, sir?
This is where you can talk.
I already said I can speak.
You'll see anyone here in the audience, I have Ellen on Zoom, please introduce yourself again, Ellen.
Hi, Ellen Thompson, 250 Salmon Brook Street. I just want to say that I can't think of a better, better business to come into the center of town than Julian's. They already attract people from all over the state, awards and all, people love it, it is so significant, and I feel like it's just gonna draw, be a magnet to draw people to town center, so I full-heartedly support it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
Anyone else? Anything else from staff? So we'll leave the same permit conditions as before if the commission approves it, and the applicant's okay with that, so. If you have anything else to add, otherwise we'll close.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing, the commission has up to 65 days to make its decision, but we'll be discussing it later on in the agenda. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is an application seeking a site plan modification for 490 Salmon Brook Street. Vice Chair Myers, can you read the call to the hearing, please?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P&amp;Z on Tuesday, December 9th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road, to hear and consider the following item. Application seeking a site plan modification to construct an addition store building, deck, shed, and associated site improvements for property located at 490 Salmon Brook Street, C2 Zone. At the hearing, NRS, the persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the community development office.
As the applicant's getting set up, I'll just remind the commission, as we all know, this is a site plan modification, not a special permit, so there's a different level of review that we have, it does not follow section 8.2, so this is going to seem to site plan, this is performance. That'll be the next one, too.
Good evening, I'm Brian Deno from Deno Land Surveying, 2 Tungus Road, Suite 214, Tarriful, Connecticut, here to speak on behalf of the owner of 490 Salmon Brook Street, Keith King, who's here with me tonight. Keith has bought the property at 490 Salmon Brook Street, just north of Lakeside Road, and he has gone to the ZVA and got approval for some variances for front yard, side yard, and rear yard, actually, all side yards, because he's got one, two, two front yards and two side yards. He got approved from ZVA to put in a 28 by 20-foot showroom off the front of the building. Existing right now, it's just that one building, that doesn't show up on your screen, that's set way off the road with a well in the back and a septic system in the front. The entire front of the parcel is paved from the building to the street, almost from the north property line to the south property line. Right now, there's an existing chain link fence down Lakeside Drive, and there's a new, a newer vinyl fence, six-foot vinyl fence on the, our north property line with 492. If you go to the next page, you can see the additions. He's proposing an addition off the front of the building for a showroom, and then in the front, he has a separate storage building for when he gets supplies dropped off, to put him in that building before he brings them into the main building. The building right now has a showroom on the north side, the northwest side, a smaller showroom, and then the rest of it is a garage and storage for the building, and on the second floor, there is a one-bedroom apartment. The previous owner started to do modifications to the apartment and put in some piers for a deck, but never finished the deck. Mr. King would like to remodel the apartment upstairs, put a deck on, and in the back, put a small storage shed for their use, because they plan on living there. In the front, the storage shed will be there for when he gets materials dropped off for his business. We were going to, if you saw the original thing, proposal, we were gonna remove the pavement, but decided to leave the pavement, add the parking in front, handicap parking required in the front with a ramp into the front of the showroom, a new septic system, but actually, it was a septic system to the south away from 492. I do not have approval from Farman Valley Health District yet, I'm meeting with them on Friday for calculated flows. We can't get a building permanent until I have approval from Farman Valley Health District, even if we apply for it, so that is waiting. We are reducing the hard surface by getting rid of some of the pavement to the north of the proposed showroom addition, and we are now capturing all the runoff from the group's leaders and putting them into the ground, into some cul-de-sac units in Sandy Shore. We do have an existing sign, and he did bring by a new sign, but we did not make that part of our application, so any signage will have to be a separate application to the, to the town. Keith, do you want to talk about the materials getting ready?
Um, sorry.
And we did include pictures of the proposed additions, and I think you have copies of all of these, they should be part of your, your package.
Oh, perfect. So the metal picture is an example of what the front of the building facing Salmon Brook will look like. It is a two-story addition, the top part of the addition will serve as our offices, bottom will be serving as additional showroom space for us. The building will have, the first floor of the building will be all use for the, for our business. We're expanding, we need, unfortunately, the building itself needs a little bit more commercial footprint to be economically feasible as a, a financial piece of real estate for commercial use. This was a nice addition to keep in harmony with the rest of the buildings around it, so it doesn't look too commercial, but yet, still presents as a commercial building. The auxiliary building that you see at the bottom is a mono pitch roof to simulate the, the existing mono pitches that are on the building now. We're gonna be changing the face of the building. We're going to be changing the face of the building, so if you've been familiar with that building, it's kind of unsightly from the road, there's virtually no curb appeal to it. We're going to be bringing it up to a much higher level of finishes as well as more contemporary, so we can update the whole overall piece of property. The last building that you see is another mono pitch, just small garden shed for my wife to be able to do some gardening in the back. It's, you know, the property we purchased it, I've had a very longstanding business in Massachusetts and I've decided to relocate in Connecticut, so it was a nice fit for what our, our use was. It just needs modification, a lot of upgrade. The exterior of the building will consist of white board and batten, 12-inch vinyl. All the windows will be changed and will be all black, so it'll be a combination of black, white, and a darker finish. The exterior building, the auxiliary building, will be a darker finish to go ahead, to complement the primary building. There's going to be some metal plating that's going to be used to simulate wood and some real stone veneer on the face as well. I do have some samples of that material. Be interesting to see. Beyond that, should be a really nice expansion for the property.
Just had a question, Abby. I notice there's some staff comments on the site plan. Do you want to review those? Are they all still open?
Yeah, some of them are still open, yeah. So staff did review the application. Couple items I just wanted to note that are included in the packet. Minor corrections on Sheet 3, just a note regarding work within the state right-of-way is cut off that needs to be adjusted. Before I go on and talk about lighting, perhaps the applicant wants to explain the plan for lighting on the site, and then I can add my comments.
There are, we are going to replace the existing floodlights with full cutoff lights on the outside of the building, and we're also adding, I think, two lights in the front, the front entrance door, and there will be socket lights on that addition. But on the side, in the back, right now, there's motion-censored spotlights, and they're going to be replaced with the lights that are on the plan that are full cutoff, pointed down, but there's still going to be motions, motion-censored lights. Look, the office is not open to the public. It's by appointment only, so it's not, there's not going to be traffic there all the time.
Our business model is quite different. It's not a full retail operation. This is more of a semi-retirement gig for us, and we're going to be strictly by appointment only servicing, you know, clients that I've had for many years. So we'll be inviting the people to, to our location versus having just random people stop by and be able to use the design studio. Very, very minimal, you know, impact.
I just noted that for the motion sensor lights, while they are full cutoff, it does appear that there might be an option to tilt them, so just a note should be added to the plan that is recommended that the commission consider requiring them, just so it's clear in the plan set that they're to be directed downward, so to prevent upward elimination of any light trespass.
Is applicant okay with that?
Absolutely.
And then I just wanted to point out that under Section 4.1.5 of the zoning regulations, architectural elevations can be waived by the commission, as long as you feel that there is enough information presented. It has been the commission's practice for smaller additions, even smaller buildings, to not require architectural elevations professionally prepared, but I just want to highlight that, you know, this is an example of something that's not officially stamped, so if the commission is okay with accepting that in terms of the level of detail that's provided. The town engineer did have comments, which are included in your packet, for his December, dated December 3rd. Again, minor comments, details about the septic, which is acknowledged that the applicant is working on Farmington Valley, and the town engineer was also looking for some more information about the stormwater management on site. But again, I did speak with him, and he felt they're very minor in nature, and it wasn't something that he thinks should hold up for the review of the application.
So if the commission were to approve the site plan, town engineer's okay to have staff?
Yep.
And yourself, yourself and the engineer work on it?
Yes, yep. And then just something else for consideration has been the commission's practice for site plans to require all work be completed or bonded prior to final sign-off. So all of those are outlined, 1 to 5, in the commission's packet.
And do we need, if we were to approve this with your condition, do we need to add the waiver of the elevation?
I think it's implied when the commission approves.
So that's our discussion part. Don't bring it up.
And there's nothing further on our end. We reviewed and everything else met the regulations.
The current parking lot, the picture, part of it's paved? You said, was all of it paved?
It's almost the entire front from the building to the road is almost completely paved. Some of it's broken up and needs to be replaced and?
You're going to update that and stripe it?
We're going to update that, stripe it, put in a handicap ramp for access into the showroom.
An example parking?
Yes, yep. The parking space calculation complies with the required, yep.
The parking lot has to be done as part of the site plan?
Yes, it will have to be.
Have another site that didn't do their parking, so?
Yes.
Anything else? Any commission questions?
No questions.
No, good.
Anything else from?
No question.
Actually, can I get clarification on the bonding? Is that just for the roadwork, for where the payment?
So that's for all the site improvements, so the parking lot, striping?
It's all that go as quick as it can get done, so.
Yeah, so depending upon some of the exterior, you know, sometimes you have to bond until the season change, and you can actually do some exterior work, but.
The ground's frozen, there's planting, you can't paint stripes, so there's no one that can. Anything else? Does any member of the public wish to speak on the site plan application? Please come forward. You want on Zoom? Anything further? I think good. Very good, then we will close the public hearing. The commission has up to 65 days to make a decision. We'll be speaking this later on our agenda. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is Item D, application seeking a site plan modification for a rear addition at 35 Hartford Avenue. Vice Chair Myers, please read the call to the hearing.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P&amp;Z on Tuesday, December 9, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room 50 North Granby Road to hear and consider the following item. Application seeking a site plan modification to construct a rear addition and associated site improvements for property located at 35 Hartford Avenue, COCE Zone. At the hearing interest, persons may appear and be heard and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the Community Development Office.
Is the applicant here?
Brian Dennell, I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Good lighting tonight, huh?
Douglas Lay.
Just introduce yourself, yourself, sir.
Douglas Lay, 35 Hartford Avenue. It's an existing dental practice. Just recently assumed ownership of the practice, and there's an ongoing capacity issue, and we're just looking to expand the space, the existing space, and for the, what's this?
1300 square?
1300 square foot addition towards the back.
Just want to go explain the addition, and are you moving parking, or is this, let me go through the plan a little bit like you did last time?
Yeah.
Right, please.
And Brian Dennell from Dennell-Lancervang, 2 Tungus Road, Suite 214 in Terrifield, Connecticut. Boy, I've hears this is the existing layout of the parking lot on the existing dentist's office with the handout access coming into the side of the building on the northwest side. Proposed addition is going to impact the back parking lot. It's going to come out, I believe, 29 feet by 44 foot, the same width of the building, with a new entrance towards the back of the building in the addition. If you can go to the next page, please. There we go. So as you can see, we took off part of the island to increase the parking in the back, back parking lot for the employees, so we don't lose as many spaces. We've also added a dumpster pad. Right now, the dumpster is in the parking lot towards the south side, and it just gets rolled around before it gets emptied. We moved the handicap parking spot to the front, added a new ramp and a new entrance. Most of the addition is going to be doctor's offices and a new lounge for the employees and an expanded waiting area. I believe he is adding two treatment rooms also. But this is a shared parking lot with the property to the north, 33 Hartford Avenue, but we needed 24 spaces for our own use, even though we have shared parking with the abutter. We went and counted all the spaces. I reconfigured the back parking lot. I think this one works better than the old one, because the old one had parallel parking. This one all has pull-in parking and enough space to back up the 24-foot aisle for everyone to back out and leave and come. The septic is in the front yard, and we do have room for a reserve area between the existing septic and the building. Again, on my issue, I still do not have approval from Farmington Valley Health District, but I am meeting with them on Friday to go over both of the projects I've spoke to you about tonight. We did do a drainage study here. The town engineer has reviewed it, and he also went to the site, and verbally, he told me he has no issues with what we've decided to do, and he agrees with our drainage. The hard surface increase is minimal, as most of the addition takes up what was already hard surface as a parking lot and a walkway. This site is served by the septic and public water. And we do have building plans if you, if you want to see those.
I guess the same, I would ask Abby again, there's some comments from the town engineer?
Yeah.
If theirs are still open, or your, also your staff comments?
Yes. I had submitted a first round of comments. This plan set addresses all of my comments. The town engineer does have a few outstanding comments on his December 3rd review. I know he was reviewing it today. I did speak to him, and he said most of it looked like they have been addressed. But again, if the commission is inclined to approve the application, I would recommend it be subject to just confirmation that all the town engineer comments are reviewed and addressed, and then also requiring a bond for any outstanding site work. And again, the proposed addition, the parking layout, all complies with the zoning regulations. If there are any changes proposed to signage, that just might have to come back for the commission's review. I know it wasn't necessarily ready for the time of the application submission for this round.
Again, the signs have to come back.
But the sign's on the site plan, so it's not?
Right, for any building sign.
Buildings, yes. Yes. And I spoke with Kevin Clark, the town engineer, today, and his issue was make sure you get approval from Farmington Valley Health District. He reviewed the drainage study and appeared to be pleased with that.
Any questions from the commission?
No questions.
I'm good.
Then I'll offer a note, have a comment for the application. I'll let you go first since you started. Come on up.
It used to be a big deal, like a long time ago, be on TV.
Reinhard Meyer, 138 Day Street, again. Comment I have relates to some of the information provided in Kevin Clark's letter regarding the plan review, and specifically the comment made about the existing pipes from the drywall, okay? I think there's a typo in here because it says, location two pipes existing, the drywall catch basin, so is that existing or exiting? Because the pipes have to go someplace. What I'm interested in finding out is the location of that drywall is so close to the edge of the drop-off, that those pipes obviously probably go there and wind up transmitting water from that storm drainage into the wetlands. So the point being here is that if that's the case, and I don't, it's transparent in the decade since this was built, that should be reviewed by inland wetlands. Because just in case some applicant happens to show up and want to put another building next door and have another pipe being, it might, you know, might be an impact overall there, and since some of us have had a lot of experience with Vessel, we know what the situation is, okay? So I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you.
Robert Flanagan, Woodcliff Drive, Reinhard was iterating on that, on that drainage there in the back of parking lot, is there a, is it just a straight drain, or is it, is there a capacity there to it before it drains? Like a dry sink or a dry well? Is there a number on the capacity?
Mr. Flanagan, you know, I think we always go through the, we'll let the applicant come up and?
I mean, at this point, what does it matter?
It's just the way we do it.
Okay. I don't want to, we have a protected waterway in the back. That's why I'm concerned about this, like Reinhard just iterated with the problems we have with Vessel. It's still a protected area in the back, and this should be looked at very carefully. It is a drainage area, which is under planning and zoning. I'll have more comments as this continues on.
Thank you, sir.
Maureen Everly, Silky Road, Representative, Lower Farmington River, Sandbrook, Wild and Scenic. Again, I want to reiterate and back up what Reinhard and Bob Flanagan have said about the importance and the respect you need to consider within that 65 days of referring this proposal to inland wetlands.
Can't hear you.
Inland wetlands.
Thank you. I mean, I can't hear you at all.
Can't hear you. I don't know if these things need to be adjusted or what, because it's difficult sitting there trying to listen to you also. But anyhow, what we learned was at the back of where the foundation is, and if you look at the map that they presented with the green line of the drawing, that back line is in keeping with the abutting neighbor at 37. And if the drainage isn't taken care of properly, then it's going to flow down that very, very steep embankment. I have walked back there. I can see a very precipitous drop, and this is part of the upland area, I assume, that that water is going to have to go somewhere, and it'll go down towards that wetland. You can walk down there on a hot, dry summer day, and there will be water coming out and seeping out into that wetland area. Like what Mr. Flanagan said was, it is a protected, wild and scenic area. And I think we learned previously that it's important to preserve that wetland. So those are my concerns, that you make a recommendation moving forward to submit this for review to IWWC. They mentioned Farmington Valley Health. If they do any studies, then I think you should take that into consideration. And even our WPCA, I'm worried about, you know, the construction and adding more to the GP gallons per day that may be involved also. So something else to consider, I think, when you- So something else to consider, I think, when you deliberate. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Anyone else want to answer? Now let the applicant, if they'd like to come up and make any responses.
The location of the one catch basin in the back of the parking lot, this site is almost entirely same. There is an overflow from the catch basin in the back. You can see the circle there. And we do have a drainage meant onto the property to our leader. I believe his name is Kevin Cousins, whose house is on the road that goes toward the condominiums. And we looked for the outlet, and it's actually buried. It just goes off our property into the sand on the property to the back at 55 Windmill Drive. It does not extend all the way back to the wetlands or anything. We're well beyond the often review areas. And anything we're doing, our increase in hard surface is less than 1,000 square feet of hard surface from the existing to the proposed. In these sandy soils, anything that fills up in that drywall or catch basin gets in a low spot, and it will hold that water and then seep down into the ground into the sand. So none of the water that we are generating, and if in the site, if you go to the next page, it'll show the grating, the break-off is pretty much at the middle of the building. And everything else flows to nowhere to that catch basin. And it's been been that way for as long as the building's been there. We're not bringing any more water back down to the wetlands to the southwest. Anything that goes into the catch basin, and if there wasn't any overflow, it would go into the pipe and on that property to the Kevin Cousins at 55 Windmill Road, under the ground, because the pipe is not exposed to the ground. It's buried.
I believe one of the comments from the town engineer was he wanted you to provide a statement for the capability of a 10-year storm event.
And we did prevent, we presented in the complete drainage study.
That been...
Yeah, so Kevin is reviewing it. I haven't had an opportunity.
So he hasn't finished reviewing it. So that's why there's the caveat.
Correct. Yep.
And then the location that he asked for, is that existing pipes? Or was that a typo? Or is it supposed to be exiting or existing? Do you know?
It's existing.
Existing? So there's supposed to be two pipes that are there?
I'm sorry.
It says two pipes existing?
No, it should be just one pipe.
Right, so we'll have to check with the town engineer. And you're not building a new catch basin?
No, we're not. We've been on the site, I didn't meet with Kevin, but I've been on the site, and that drywall is huge and it's clean. It's not dirty. You know, that's the biggest issue I've always run into in the last 40 years with drywells is you ought to maintain them. Otherwise, they clog. And this one, I went out there during the snowstorm and rainstorm, and it was functioning the way it should.
Maybe the applicant in any has to keep these functioning for the life of the...
Correct.
It's not that if they get approved wherever site and they let it fill up, there would be violation of...
Right.
Okay. So it's, you can't walk away from it?
Correct.
Any other commission questions?
No questions.
I don't have any question.
No questions.
Any other staff questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, everybody. All right. Great, we're going to close the hearing then, and the commission will have up to 65 days to make its decision, and we'll be discussing the application later on. So thank you.
Could I just excuse you for a minute? I had something to say about his presentation.
All right. It's not quite closed yet, so come on up.
All right, thank you very much.
Almost closed.
Sorry. I'm Peter Boskowski. I'm at 55 Windmill Drive in Granby. I am the neighbor. I own the wetland. And I appreciate all your hard work. I want to address him so. But the pipe that he's referring to, it's not buried. It does exit through Kevin Cousins' lot. And every two, three months, I'm down there cleaning up beer cans and every other coffee cup that flows down there. There's a whole lot that ends up in those catch basins from the dumpster that is rolling around, as he noted. But there are, the pipe is buried, and it does exit straight into the wetland underneath what on his map will show a farm road. And it is good and buried, but it does exit, and there is a trench. And if you need pictures, I guess I can take them. But there's a whole lot of asphalt up there catching a lot of water. They did a repair this spring in the far corner of that parking lot. It's a sandbank, and no matter how well they pack it down, eventually the asphalt does cave in around the catch basins. So it shouldn't be a problem for their addition. I don't have a problem with it because it's basically the same amount of square footage. But just so everybody knows, everything from those top lots ends up in my swamp. Hence, the events of two years ago with the inland wetlands commissions. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you want to make any comment on that? For the pipes? That's your response?
Unfortunately, this is not something I included in the application, but we do have a pipe that comes from Hartford Avenue through our property onto 37, and then all the way down to the wetlands. But that is owned by the state.
So is your catch basin, the catch, the basin that we're talking about?
That's this pipe that goes here, goes onto 37, then goes all the way down to the wetlands, which is, that's the state's pipe.
Can we show that plan on the screen for the... Which plan would you like to show?
It's this pipe here that I know goes all the way down to the wetlands. This is owned by the state, catches drainage from the street and a catch basin there, and then it goes all the way down to the wetlands that they were all talking about. So that was also the big issue with past applications at 37 Hartford Avenue. The catch basin that we were discussing was that one up there that goes on Kevin's property. And if he did find a pipe outlet, I'd be glad to be able to hear him.
Certain.
Find it.
It's a... We can talk if you want.
Yeah, I don't need...
It does end up on the top of the ground that goes travel across. And it's probably...
You know, actually, I did do a survey of your property when you wrote the soul, so I did locate some of those pipes in the drainage.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, last call. Going once, twice, okay? We'll close the public hearing then. The commission has 65 days to make its decision. We'll be discussing it later on. Thank you very much. Okay, next is reordered agenda. We're going to be having informal discussion for 37 Hartford Ave, possible mixed-use building and associated site improvements. And as stated at the beginning of the meeting tonight, there is no application, no text amendment, no action before the permission. It is purely an informal discussion by an interested party. And as I said before, the commission encourages interested parties to have these discussions before maybe going through the application process. So I'll let the...
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, I'm Rob Lebec from R. Lebec Associates here this evening representing Forest Divine. As you had mentioned, we're here informally. We'd like to have a discussion, kind of an informal noodling session, so to speak. Obviously, there's a lot of neighbors and adjacent landowners in the audience this evening, which is helpful to us. This is kind of a fact-finding mission for us. We are aware of what I would call the play-by-play on this property over the course of the last couple decades. Since 2007, anyway, we've kind of gone back through some of the meeting minutes. We've gone through a lot of the old plans, which we have some of them with us. And really, what we're here to do this evening is assess, not only, you know, kind of take the temperature of the board with regard to this project as we would see it, and then also certainly welcome dialogue from the folks from the, with regard to the resource areas, as well as neighbors, et cetera. So basically, what we're here to talk about is what we would call a program that would work for Mr. Divine. And in the past, there was a quite, you know, a nice, fairly attractive building that was designed here. You're aware that the foundation exists from about, what, 2008 or '09 till today? There's kind of a roughed-in gravel parking lot that exists. We are not affiliated with the last proponent in any way, shape, or form. This is a whole new idea. Might be similar, might be different. We're not, I'm not really privy to the details of what that last applicant had proposed. But essentially, what we're here to do is to see if there's a project that is viable based on the acquisition cost, based on the construction cost of today's, what we're dealing with today. And really, what that leads us to explain is we're looking at the difference between a mixed-use project here versus a residential project. When we, Mr. Divine was able to come and talk to the development commission with regard to, you know, the use here, we're familiar with the successes of some of the residential properties in the area. Obviously, there's a housing crunch. We're all aware of that. So Mr. Divine would be leading, leaning towards a residential redevelopment of the council or kind of finishing the development of this property. We understand the nature of the neighborhood. We really like the nature of the neighborhood. We're not looking to change it. We think that what was originally proposed back in 2007 was an attractive approach. Obviously, the foundation for that building exists, so there's some benefit to utilizing that in some way, shape, or form. I think the crux of the matter here, and at least, and apologize for not being able to totally connect the dots, but reading the meeting minutes, et cetera, it sounded like there were some concerns potentially related to inland wetlands. We saw some comments from Kate Bednas, the former inland wetlands officer, as well as some of the comments related to the, you know, the Board of Health, you know, the septic flows for the proposed use. And then obviously, there was, sounded like there was a pretty aggressive project proposed not too long ago. So just to kind of get to the crux of the matter, we're contemplating whether or not there is an appetite for a smaller residential development within the existing footprint, essentially the same massing of architecture that was proposed originally. We're wondering whether or not two stories of residential could be utilized here. So that would mean that on the first story, this is the rear view of the building from the back parking lot. I think there's another view of the, from the front. But the idea would be that the upper two stories, there we go. So that's kind of the street view. The idea would be that this structure would be utilized, two upper stories or the at-grade story from the street, and the upper story would be residential. And then the lower story would either be storage or some sort of, you know, lobby or accessory component there, too. We did hear from your planner that that may be a concern of the planning, I'm sorry, the Zone Planning Commission, wanted to, you know, come today and talk to you. So I'll stop there. Happy to answer any questions you have regarding our conceptual program and what we're thinking. And we're welcoming thoughts and ideas, and frankly, the color commentary from the neighbors as well that helps us assess the situation for sure. Thank you.
So just, what's your specific ask that you're interested in? Healing us our opinion?
I think we would like to try to utilize the two stories of the structure from the street. So looking at it from the upper, the upper elevation, we would be looking about six units per floor is basically, two, six two-bedroom units per floor. That would be ideal. Mr. Divine, the numbers would work better with more than that, but we also are cognizant of kind of the, you know, what's happened in the past. So we would be interested in pursuing that inside the existing footprint. We've looked at it. We think that that would work. We understand that there may be a special permit required for utilizing the first story. But certainly, we don't want to, we're not coming in here to push anything on the town. That's not Mr. Divine's approach. It's not our approach. We want to come in informally and see if that's palatable. If it's not, it's not. And, you know, we may make a decision to walk away from it. But, you know, it's worth, it's worth it for us to at least, you know, have the dialogue.
What's the mixed-use part here? Because I see in the packet, it says you're looking at a mixed-use. Is that going to be, I call it, the basement?
Yeah, in a perfect world, well, I mean, frankly, there's the septic component, right? So we're trying to balance the unit count, the actual square footage within the building, and trying not to, you know, get to a point where we're making concerns for the inland wetland folks or Board of Health with regard to septic system. So if we have two-bedroom units, we're talking about basically 24 beds if we're utilizing those two stories. The lower story could potentially, depending on egress and some of the other details, have residential in that lower story. But we're thinking that, you know, we were thinking that the 24 beds is probably, and so 12 units was probably close to the max that might be palatable, but we don't know that. So we're a little bit flexible. But the mixed-use component was based on discussions with your planner that had mentioned that, you know, the upper stories being residential may be more palatable than the main first story from the street. If I'm explaining that.
Mixed-use, if you heard of mixed-use, would be the first level is a retailer or a restaurant. Like the one gentleman that was here, and then the upstairs is... That's what mixed-use means to...
No, no, yeah, that's exactly what it means to us. I guess what we're saying is we don't necessarily want to do mixed-use. If that was the only option, it might make it, I think it's fair to say it's not viable.
Not necessary.
For, for Mr. Divine. Maybe for some sort of owner-occupied situation, for example, the gentleman next door.
Well, I do a lot of talking, so I'm going to turn it over.
From my standpoint, it's kind of tough to say what I would be willing to, willing to consider without a more specific notion of what you want to do. This was really, in the, in the material that we received, that the commission received tonight in considering this, this was proposed as a mixed-use. And what I understood, that exactly the way Chairman Lockwood did, which is first floor is retail office, restaurant, and the second floor would be where the residential would be. But it sounds like what you, what you're really interested in is a two-story, 12-unit residential development.
Yeah, the viability, financial viability of the, you know, and again, restaurant versus office, et cetera. You know, this is a little bit off the beaten path from a restaurant-type of standpoint. We look at that as office space, either medical or some sort of professional office space, which we have done kind of, you know, an analysis of that, and there seems to be a significant amount of vacant space. So again, for, you know, a viable business that wants to be owner-occupied and pay themselves rent, that makes perfect sense. So that might be the best scenario for this building. But in this particular case, there's a lot of that space available at about, you know, 14 to 15 bucks a foot, which if you're building new construction, that's not, the numbers don't crunch. And that's okay, too. But we, you know, that's why we're here.
Abby, a couple of questions. I believe in this zone, mixed-use is approved.
A special permit.
Correct. So mixed-use is viable here. So I believe an application for mixed-use of this site would be received and accepted and reviewed. And then number two, I believe there's an approved special permit for this location for a number of units. We approved it. Correct.
But it was all office, I think.
So the, yeah, the 2007 approval was site planned for an office use, which is permitted in that zone. So professional office is allowed in the COCE zone. Mixed-use and multifamily require special permit approval, as do several other commercial uses in that zone.
Then it must have been informal because I do believe there was another informal discussion related to this property for apartments?
Yes. So the, the property owner, the current property owner, he came in for a zone change... Yes. So the, the property owner, the current property owner, he came in for a zone change. So this property didn't used to be the COCE zone.
Yeah.
I believe it was either center edge or center, yeah, it must have been center edge. And he was exploring multifamily.
Yes.
And that was not allowed in that zone. So the commission did approve the COCE.
Don't change.
Correct, yeah.
And then he never came back?
Right, right.
That was what I was.
Yeah, it was either multi or mixed-use. I don't recall, one of those.
I think it was. So now it is approved?
Yes. So now, zone change, right, is the COCE zone.
Yeah.
And mixed-use and multifamily and other commercial uses are by special permit.
Right. It's what's being discussed within the units per square foot, according to his own.
Yes. So the density, allowable density in the commercial center zones is 15 dwelling units per acre. So certainly at...
Proof of concept is how many?
12. And he's, yeah.
We got mixed-use is checked. The number of units is within the allowable code.
Mm-hmm.
Seems, is it all made?
That's from a regulations standpoint.
Correct, from a regulations perspective.
So now that, it still has to be a special permit review. We have to review, as well as other, our agents, there are our commissions in town.
Correct.
Our wetlands commission and that, so.
Through the chair, if I could.
Yeah.
To clarify, it probably would be defined as a multifamily project versus a mixed-use.
Right.
Just because, if I'm using, I guess, I'd clarify the definitions with your planner, but, you know, both stories would be residential, and maybe there's accessory space to that residential on the lower story.
Should that be more like storage?
Yeah.
For the people who live there, kind of thing?
Exactly. For, you know, for, you know, folks that need a little extra space if they have an apartment upstairs and, you know, that type of thing. You know, a lot of apartments these days, you need, you know, places for the Amazon deliveries, those types of things. So that kind of accessory space, that, you know, lobby, et cetera, maybe a little, you know, rec room, kind of thing.
Picking up on what Vice Chair Myers said, I mean, I think what he's saying is, what you're proposing would be eligible to get a special permit. Under our regulations, it wouldn't be forbidden. So, but, but we would want to see what you're, we'd need to see what you're actually proposing.
Understood. Just to give you a little bit more information, this would be a market-rate project, so this would not be affordable in any way, shape, or form with regard to, I think the previous proposal on this property was, again, I think there was a significant density that they were...
That was not even part, that was a different state statute.
Yeah, yeah. So just to clarify, we, this would be something, we want to stay inside the existing footprint, work with something that's palatable from an aesthetic standpoint on the building, and ideally work with inland-wetlands and any folks that have, you know, neighbors that have concerns with regard to the stormwater and, you know, Board of Health.
Just for clarity, you're not asking for any changes in our regulations to increase density? You're going to stay within our...
That is correct, sir.
Perfect.
So I think we'd better see the...
I can recall that on the application that died, and it didn't get in front of us, just in the papers, there was concern about the height being beyond what the fire trucks in town could reach. That's not a concern here, is it?
No.
No, the...
This was approved.
This was approved.
So this, this would, this would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Where is the closest that you could actually hook into a bona fide sewer system as opposed to using a septic?
Great question. Up at the intersection near the plaza.
Yeah.
Bank Street and Hartford Avenue.
And, yeah, we did look at it with your town engineer. Everyone's been very helpful. We did discuss that. We looked at the financial feasibility of that with a pump station. It's tough to make work. We would love to, frankly, tie into sewer. It's a pretty good run. The grades are, the elevations, the inverts, et cetera, are such that it would be tricky, if not impossible. So it'd be a pump. Can do it by gravity, so it'd be by pump. Pump station versus like an E1 system, the town engineer made it clear that, you know, a real municipal pump station type of solution would be what they would be looking for, which has got a big-ticket item on that one. So for a, one building development, it's, the, I guess it's fair to say that the septic solution is the most viable. We did talk about, you know, maybe we look to try to put the septic system in front to get, you know, or, or maybe there's two, keep the flow down to each system, you know, keep the aggregate flows to, you know, a reasonable amount, and keep it up front to the, as much as possible, because I think that was, through reading the, the meeting minutes, was a concern of, I think the inland-wetland folks had commented about concerns to the resource area. So, you know, we'd look at all options, but, you know, that's obviously another silo, so to speak.
Would any approval we make be contingent on both inland-wetlands and, yeah, they'd have to be there first.
Yeah, that's what's recommended, yes.
Yeah.
But that is a great question.
Last one, because it never really reached us.
Yeah, that is a great question. So we actually think we can reduce the amount of impervious that was proposed. There was about 53 parking spaces in the 2007 proposal. Again, with, with 12 units, even if you have two cars per unit and a little bit of visitor parking, so say we, you know, if it was palatable at 30, we could reduce what was proposed, you know, lessen the impacts. It's all, you know, you've seen it, right? It's, the foundation's there. It's been graded. There's structures in the ground already. So it's, that's why we're here, because trying to, you know, A plus B equals C, we're trying to, you know, make sure we have all of the, we're not missing any of the color commentary, so to speak.
I don't have any.
You have all asked my questions?
Yeah.
Eric?
I don't think I have any questions.
I'll just state that, you know, anything that comes before us, and I think you've, in your general outline, we'd like the architecture to stay colonial feel. Our regulations kind of state to not have it be a concrete, you know.
Absolutely.
Cinder block house. You know, your, your GA here, General Arrangement, seems to show more of a colonial with the roof type and the chimneys. So that's something the commission definitely looks for.
Yeah.
That's in conformance with our regulations say. While it's not in this commission's authority or purview, I would highly recommend, what you stated is that you work, there's this very near sensitive wetlands area.
Mm-hmm.
That before you were to really spend time with this commission, to make sure you address the concerns that would be with inland-wetlands.
Absolutely.
Both for, not just your septic, but the, you know, run, runoff, and just changing patterns, because that was a valid concern from the last one. And, you know, if you see the, the record in the minutes, you can see how the commission, that commission was looking at it. So.
Yes, sir.
Any guidance I can give you would be on that as well.
Thank you.
You know, but then, we, we look at the architecture, making sure that the traffic flow, fire access, things the commission allowed, it said, you know, those are all things we'd look at. But if you're willing to stay within the regulations, and not asking us to change it, I think we're all here, we have an open mind to that. But we want you to please check the wetlands, what I think is the priority before you focus on, on asking for a special permit, would be the wetlands.
Fair enough. Great.
And the layout of how, you know, consider everything I just said, the traffic flow and the fire department and just the impact in the area.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Abby, anything?
No.
Okay. And I also encourage you to, to talk to those folks in the room that are interested. There's other ones. Please feel free, offline, you know, to have those discussions ahead of time.
Yeah.
Those, those go a long way to address concerns. So I'm glad to hear you said that, and I know you'll have some interested people who want to talk to you.
That's great. Appreciate it. Look forward to it. Thank you.
We say, thank you, your neighbors.
Talk to your neighbors.
Talk to your neighbors.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is item eight, receive applications and schedule publicarions. Do we have anything, Abby?
Uh, no, nothing for receipt now.
Nothing?
We will likely have a January meeting, though.
Okay. So we'll plan on a January meeting. If anything comes in within the time, statutory timeline, we'll add it to the agenda.
Yep.
Okay. Next is consideration of applications where we concluded the publicaring. We've closed four publicarions today. I'll start with the first one, the text amendment to zoning regulation 3.10 for the T1 zones. I don't see that that really modifies or changes much for what the intent of that zone was, or in the plan of conservation and development, and make some use of that building that I think enhances it. So I don't see any issues to it. It's within the regulation and the plan. Any comments?
I'd be happy to see it occupied and in use.
Get over it. Makes sense. The uses that are proposed both are allowed and dependent on action over somebody.
Could you ask them?
Yes.
Can I just ask, if you have a conversation, please take it either in the hall, or if it's not too cold outside?
It is too cold outside.
Yeah. Let me just hold and sit down. Okay, thank you. All right, so if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion?
If I, when you consider a motion also an effective date, perhaps December 31st?
January 1st.
Or January 1st?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right. I motion we approve an application seeking amendment to zoning regulations, section 3.10, neighborhood and commercial transition zone T1, to add section 3.10.2.13 for a mixed-use building to be effective January 1st, 2026.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries. Next was an application seeking to modify a special permit for section 8.3 and 8.16 for 9 Bank Street to expand the, the use. Again, I don't think the commission has any concerns. It fits perfectly for that relocation. It also takes care of an empty storefront that's been there for, I think, some time.
Oh, yeah.
And would be in addition to town.
Yeah, I agree it's empty, and it's, and they're going to need it. Might as well do it now before later, because they're going to, they're going to need it.
Well, yeah, they've got the, they've got the crew there. Why not just get it done?
For sure. And I would just, if any motion that's made just reference that the...
Previous permit.
Previous permit condition. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion we approve application seeking to modify a special permit under zoning regulations, section 8.3 and 8.16 for a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages to expand into the adjacent unit for property located at, is it addressed?
Nine.
Nine Bank Street. No other changes to the previously approved special permit are offered or granted.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries. Next was a site plan modification for 490 Salmonbrook Street. I just had a question, Abby. The uses that are there, they're existing, they don't require a special permit. They said there's a residence.
Correct.
So that's pre-existing?
Correct. Yep. And there is, yes, there is approval granted for a caretaker apartment, and there are no changes to that.
Okay, so this is going to be a caretaker, okay.
And I know that, Abby, they, they have been to ZBA to get some setback variances?
Yes.
The new, new site plan.
Yes.
Those requirements?
Yes, exactly. What is shown on this site plan is what ZBA approved for the setbacks.
Okay.
Frankly, I think it's, I think it would be an improvement. It's going to be a more attractive building than it is now.
Much more.
It's a great.
Great improvement. Yeah, I mean, it just, it's just going to, I think, I think it'll go well for his business, because I think it's going to be an attractive building.
Yeah, improve the area.
I just see somebody coming into Grand, wanting to have a business.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Somebody moving to Connecticut instead of the way around.
Exactly. And we did make one comment about making the lights downward, which is in the staff memo.
Is addressed.
If there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion.
Motion we approve application seeking a site plan modification to construct in addition, storage building, deck, and shed associated and associated site improvements for property located at 490 Salmonbrook Street contingent upon the following five items. One, correct the note on sheet three regarding work within the state right of way so it is fully visible. Two, add a note to the plan set to the exterior that the exterior motion-activated light shall be directed downward to the ground to prevent both upward illumination and light trespass onto abutting properties. Three, all outstanding comments in the town engineer's memo dated December 3rd, 2025 are to be resolved prior to finalizing and filing the mile-hour plan set. If Armington Valley Health District review, review results and require changes to the site plan that are beyond what may be minor modifications that can be approved by staff, the applicant will have to return to the commission for review and approval. Four, all outstanding site work must be completed and bonded prior to certificate approval. The bond amount shall be prepared by the applicant's engineer and submitted for review and approval by the town engineer. The bond shall be cash or certified check. Five, the plan set should not be finalized and filed until corrections are made, as outlined on numbers one through three of...
A second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, it's great. Welcome to Grand.
Yes.
Okay, next was an application seeking a site plan modification for a rear dash, rear addition for property located 35 Hartford Ave. Then we had public comments at the public hearing. Again, this is a site plan modification, so we're just approving the site plan. There was some comment about inland and wetlands. This commission does not govern inland-wetlands. We don't have authority to refer or delay applications. I'll just ask staff, though, is, was inland-wetlands required for this site plan modification?
No. This proposed work is outside of their limits of jurisdiction. Correct.
The stormwater concern about the drainage, which was item two on the engineer, that was brought up today, is, is that the area of concern that we need to, for staff approval? Is that something, what do you guys think?
I think it needs some clarification on the engineers.
Right.
It's kind of, the first line is, is kind of confusing, then leads into the second one. So I don't know if there's some clarification on the two pipes, one pipe?
Yeah, so the town engineer is and has requested additional information about the stormwater system and the site being able to handle the storm event. So as part of that, he will look at to make sure that all the infrastructure is in place and is functioning as it should be, and with the, the location of those pipes and the drywall.
So is that work that still needs to be done by the, covered by the two recommended comments that you have?
Correct. So I think if the commission is inclined to approve it, subject to resolution of those outstanding items, that will give the town engineer the ability to look at that, to make sure that the plans are changed to address his concerns about the pipes and the stormwater.
Okay.
The other thing is, we could add a condition of keeping the drywells maintained as their responsibility.
That's what I asked. Abby said the site plan, they have to maintain the conditions.
Good.
So that's the same, like, parking lot pavement?
Right.
What I was going to suggest is on the last one, we had an item, Eric, that said that if they don't meet it, they have to come back. Should we add that line to the, you had that on the list?
It is on...
What's after it?
Item.
That's here, too?
Yeah.
Because that one, if the site, if the town engineer, if the concerns on the catch basin and drywall are not properly addressed to the town engineer, then the person will have to come back.
Right. And that condition that you've already given us.
Or it changes the site plan enough where it would have to meet a further approval.
Yes.
The language is here.
Yeah, I think that protects us. The, the, item two of the staff memo, I think that sufficiently protects us.
Okay, it's there. Because I just want to make, I mean, it sounds like there's a state drain that's not part of this.
So maybe for number two, it should be changed slightly to say if town engineer slash a VHD review results, to just clarify that it's also town engineer.
That's good.
Wait a minute, if town engineer.
Slash Armington Valley.
So just add it again there.
This one right here. So it'd be if town engineer and/or...
Should we do that reference?
Yeah, the second reference.
Yeah, doesn't work. First reference.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't. It's second.
That protects the interest for the concerns, that one? Everybody comfortable?
Yeah.
I think they're valid concerns, but I think they can be addressed. It's a site plan, so they have to follow.
Right.
The building code and what the town engineer does. It's not, okay.
Yeah, that's good.
It's an existing, they're not building a new catch basin. It's an existing. So we'll make sure we address those comments from the public today.
Yeah, absolutely.
Existing, existing Burton lot, existing drainage, as the applicant commented, very little is actually changing from the potential to introduce new wire that hasn't already been introduced for a very long time, both from the state and the property.
The big change is really that it's going from an office property to a, to a residential property, retention. Oh, no, I'm sorry, this is a different one. Too many things.
Oh, he's expanding his business.
This is the dentist office with the addition.
Just increase in the rooftop, which is, was parking lots, which was the same kind of...
Yeah, it's really.
And he's expanding his business.
Yeah, it's not.
His business is doing well, so I'm glad he's in town, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. If there's no further discussion on that, take a motion.
Motion we approve application seeking a site plan modification to construct a rear addition and associated site improvements for property located at 35 Hartford Ave and contingent upon the following two items. One, all outstanding site work must be completed or bonded prior to certificate of approval. The bond amount shall be prepared by the applicant's engineer and submitted for review and approval by the town engineer. The bond shall be cash or certified check. Two, all outstanding comments on the town engineer memo dated December 3rd, 2025 are to be resolved prior to finalizing and filing the Mylar Plan Set. If the town engineer or Farmington Valley Health District review results in required changes to the site plan that are beyond what may be a minor modification that can be approved by staff, the applicant will have to return to the commission for review and approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve as presented. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, next is staff report and correspondence.
I just want to let everyone know that the consultant, BFJ, is wrapping up the Granby Center study, and there is a presentation scheduled for this Thursday at 7:00. And then following that, the committee will be having a short meeting to review the study recommendations and finalize that. So, and the plan has been posted on the website in case, or the study, rather, in case anyone wants to review it. And that's on the Granby Center Advisory Committee webpage.
About 7:00 PM this Thursday?
Yes, in the senior center.
So will that be available on Zoom? Because I know that you.
Yes. Yep, and there is a Zoom option. Yep.
I know we have stuff in the senior center, that's not always the case.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Anything from the commission?
Nope.
You want to give an update on the plan of conservation?
Sure. We had, we've had several meetings of the entire group, and we also had our first workshop. It was, we were pleased at how well, and actually, one of the people who attended is right here in the audience. We had decent attendance and decent participation, but the way it's set up, and Abby and her staff did a lot of work. There were tables for the various topics, and there were surveys that people could fill out. There were members circulating if people wanted to give verbal feedback. So I think people are aware that it's going on. We have another meeting right before Christmas to continue and really start in earnest the